I'm so happy today to have Bob Simrell here. Did I say it right?
Yes, you did. Yeah, you said it better than I say it actually.
Yeah, thanks for coming today.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, you are a Portland City Council candidate in District Two, which I think is great. You're the second one I've had from there. You're the 11th person I've had, and I always try to do this spiel of if, if you want to come on the show, just hit me up. I know time's kind of running out and I'm kind of booked out, but feel free to reach out to me and I'll try to get you on the show. Yeah, and Kristen's here. Thanks so much for co-hosting as usual.
Thank you, Andy.
I always love your mug too. That's awesome. I'm jealous.
Mary Constantino.
I forget one of those on Monday.
I need to order some for everybody.
Yeah, I just want to know like about District Two and tell me a little bit about your background. I was just looking at your card, which I love these.
I love them too.
I'm collecting more and I almost, I don't want to say I have them all, but, but yeah, your story is just so cool and I'm, I want to have people hear about that. So yeah, just tell me about running in your district and your background and all that stuff.
I appreciate it. Yeah. So I call that my rookie card.
Yeah.
It costs about 11 cents to make. It'll be worth a penny someday. So you'll find it in card shops everywhere, but yeah, those are, those are, were designed by Ann, who is my campaign manager and it's so much better than like a business card. No one hangs onto a business card, but people hang onto these, they hold it and look at it. And it's got my QR code on the back. So it actually is really functional and cool. It's really, it's really clever.
People can, this way, people can line those up. They can keep them, I think, too, in their order. They can shuffle them around, order preference. And then when they're ready to vote, they can line those up.
Yeah.
And there's some correlation between, hey, these are, those future Portland events, I think, really help with that. Line those up and say, hey, I've met these people. I really like these people. I mean, it's just really smart.
Yeah. And I actually got-
It's visual. It's cool.
Yes.
I got this from you and I know that's how Ann wants to do it. It's like, hey, you have to actually meet the person and then you get the card, which I think is smart.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's been, it's been great. And yeah, so my, you know, a little bit of my, my background. So my wife and I live in Northeast Portland by Grant Park. Three kids, second marriage. My first marriage was nine years and that's why I have an older son that's 36 now. He just relocated to Portland with his wife. So I'm happy to have all of my kids here. And my, my middle son went to Grant. My daughter went to Grant. I went to Grant class of 76, going back a lot of years. But before I went to Grant High School, I actually grew up in Southern California and lived in the projects outside of Compton. So in the sixties, being a little black kid with a white mom, living in the projects outside of Compton was challenging.
It was just you and your mom?
My sister as well.
And your sister.
Three of us. Yeah. So there were three of us. And my mom and dad's relationship was off and on. They were very young when they got married. Interracial marriage at that time was challenging, as you might imagine, even in California. There were pockets where it just wasn't accepted and there were a lot of side incidents that happened. But my mom was pretty much, was pretty much like a latchkey kid. She was driving into LA every day. And so we lived in, and I just remember, you know, doing the shopping with food stamps and I'd always snicker, stick in a Snickers bar or something like that, you know? And she was cool with it. But I never, I never viewed, uh, living in the projects as defining me. There was some air of optimism that I always had. I had good role models and mentors around me. I played athletics, which kept me out of trouble. And I tell folks, you know, even the gang members, their little brothers would, they'd be in the stands because their little brothers were playing with me. So you kind of get a pass as an athlete around some of the tough stuff. And the other thing is being mixed race, um, you know, coming up, being involved in athletics is, you know, if you're good at sports, everybody accepts you. And so I was always able to find community around athletics. Uh, and then we moved to Portland in the middle seventies. I want to say like 74, something like that. And that's where I attended Grant High School. Uh, and then my dad, my mom and dad got back together and I was really excited. He got a job as a janitor at the Lewis and Clark Law School. And because he was employed by Lewis and Clark, I got to go tuition free. So yeah, great institution.
So that's where you went to college?
That's where I went to college.
That's great.
And it was just amazing.
Good move by your dad.
Well, how great is it for him to think, you know, I'm a janitor and I got to send my kid, you know, get this in my kid to college.
Private college.
Yeah, amazing. So I played baseball there. I ran the Black Student Union. I got to go to Costa Rica and live overseas. And so from there, uh, when I finished college, pretty much right afterwards, I got hired and recruited by Coca-Cola, moved to San Francisco. And spent a few years there and then got promoted, moved to Seattle. And I spent a lot of time in the Seattle area, working for a number of different companies, startup companies. And then, as I mentioned, uh, before we hopped online, um, I was introduced and recruited to go work for Tony Robbins in San Diego and run his global sales team. So, uh, and then from there, just different jobs. I think I've worked in, I want to say 15 or 16 different jobs with companies. And including running my own, which is really difficult to do. Anyone who's tried to do that, I have a lot of respect for that. So.
It is difficult.
It's very difficult. Yeah. It's a, you know, it's that persistent, um, effort that you can't really get the flywheel going. It's hard to get the flywheel going, you know? And you think you get a good, you get a good deal and then something happens and then a relationship changes with your buyer and it's like, oh, like, you know, so it's crazy town.
What, what business was that?
I had several businesses. I had a, and I still do sales consulting, you know, but I did sales consulting for small, medium businesses. But I also had this really cool import company where I was going into Vietnam, uh, maybe a couple of times a year. And I got a contract with Division of Kroger, QFC stores. They were here. They were out of Seattle at the time. And I was importing candles that were, uh, that were going into the QFC stores and they would literally like load end caps with them. And I had like 80 stores loaded with end caps and the model was.
What are end caps?
So, yeah, they're the end units. So like, you know, opposite of where the cash register is. So it's that big end unit where you'll see all their main displays.
End of an aisle, right?
End of an aisle.
Right. It's where you pick up, where your children start picking things up and throwing them onto the conveyor belt.
Visual, big visual merchandise.
Yeah, a lot of that. And what was really cool about it is like, if you saw the candle, you would think it's like, it's like an eight dollar candle. But I found a source in Vietnam and I was paying like 65 cents. I was selling them for like a dollar 40 and QFC was selling them five for $10. So they were flying off the shelves. I'd sell like four or 500,000 candles a year. Yeah. So it was crazy. And then I got some other Kroger deals, but it was, yeah, it was really, I just found an opportunity. Yeah. And it was kind of one of those things. So I'm just really creative that way. I see opportunity. And this one actually came through a buddy of mine who owns some grocery stores in this area. And he, he actually first saw the products and goes, man, these things are flying off the shelves. And then I approached the buyer at QFC and he loved it. So just a lot of different, you know, things. I've worked in tech firms, like I say, other startups. So. But I, but I think the thing that, you know, when I think about this opportunity, um, and leaning into this opportunity. One is I had a buddy of mine say, you know, Bob, if you took all of people in North and Northeast Portland and put them into a vat and made soup out of it, you would come out the other end, right? Socially, economically, racially.
I think I agree with that.
So it's kind of like, I thought, okay, well that, you know, I can relate. And I, and I tell folks, you know, and there are folks that have crossover and they can go to any part of this, of this district, which is really diverse, as you guys know, right? I think it's less than 10% African American, but 15% Hispanic, you know, in that district. And some folks don't really recognize that component of it. But I tell folks, I can go, you know, I can go talk to, you know, someone who's struggling financially and struggling in their home or of color or, and then I can go talk to a CEO and, you know, sit down with them and have a conversation with them. And I think that, that representation is natural for me. And I think it makes me a little like, you know, approachable to, to the 160,000 folks that live in the community, especially with this new form of government. So that personal part of it for me really resonated. And then I had a chance to sit down with Mike Jordan, who's handling the transition team. And this was-
With the city.
With the city. Yeah, thanks. Yeah. For the new form of government with the 12 city councils and then, you know, they're organizing restructuring the bureaus and bringing in professional managers to run that. And when I sat down with him, what really resonated, uh, was he made the comment that, you know, Bob, what we really want to do is kind of pivot to more of an enterprise approach and how we run operations. We're $8 billion budget, 7,000 employees. And that's exactly where my expertise is, right? Working in 15 different companies. I mean, you have to produce results. You reorganize every year. You always ask to do more with less. So I got hardwired, you know, throughout my career to produce results because if you didn't, you're out.
I would like the city to do more with less.
Isn't that great?
That sounds really-
Yeah, your whole background seems to like reinforce that of like lean management and all that stuff of, you know, yeah. And I totally agree. Like I wish our city and county had a lot more of that. Yeah.
There's so much money that's being spent. And I think-
Billions with the B and billions.
And people are sitting around going, how come I'm, I've got all these potholes? How come people are still on the street in tents and there's open, you know, all these issues and it makes us crazy.
Right.
Exactly.
And so you're saying that you, given your background, you think you'll be able to bring the kind of personality and experience to a city council that will allow people in your district to see some results?
Absolutely.
Some return on this tax investment.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, one of the things, I attended a recent chamber event and they covered the economics in Portland in the last few years dire.
Yeah.
Businesses are leaving, citizens are leaving, you know, all of a sudden we're competing with-
A billion dollars a year.
A billion dollars, you know, a year of lost income.
Article. Yes.
Yeah, exactly. That's where I picked up on that. A billion dollars a year in lost income. And so, you know, Wheeler is not going to be the mayor going forward, but he's already signaling that there's going to be some budget challenges next year. And so, uh, you know, it's, um, I, I think that, and the other thing is the way that I approach this is, okay, there's going to be 12 new folks, three from each district. We really need, this opportunity is an opportunity to diversify the skills and the background that are now members of that collective. And when I think about, uh, when I think about the 12 folks and I think about even my district, the problems don't stop at the district line, right? So you have to have a holistic view, you know, to how we solve problems.
Cause you all have to work together.
You have to work together.
If you're just vote, if you're the only person voting on things, nothing gets done. Um, yeah.
And I think, you know, I, I think that there's an opportunity to have a coalition of folks. I mean, we need six or seven folks. That what I would call being, you know, the, the folks that are leaning in, into supporting me are looking for practical results.
Yes.
And accountability and transparency. And like you say, the return on the taxpayer dollar. And my mindset is just around those things. And I think, you know, the opportunity, some of the things I learned, like when I ran sales for Tony Robbins and was a member of his leadership team, I traveled a lot with him. And had just an amazing, you know, kind of, uh, opportunity to grow myself and to learn, you know, kind of who I was and what was effective. And so I've got some leadership skills that I think, you know, will also add to, to that collective. And, you know, I, I feel I've got persistence, but I also have a lot of creativity that drives me. And I think a lot of that comes from the diversity of my background and the different work I've done and the different folks that I've worked with.
Yeah. I was just thinking, yeah, it is, to me, like it's a almost perfect blend of like leadership and approachability. Cause like I was telling you, even when I first met you a couple of weeks ago. And I'm not trying to throw shade at anyone else at the event, but you just seem very approachable and easy to talk to. And, and it's strange for me because I'm the type of person that usually I have no issue talking to anybody. And to find another person like that, it's just like, it's like, oh, great. Yeah. And you're just like, yeah, I'll come on the show and blah, blah. And, but I think that's so important. Especially with the goal of this whole charter to have somebody that's approachable, that has leadership skills and has, you know, this business understanding and ability to sort of be accountable and transparent and all that stuff. Um, so yeah, I just think it's really cool that you're in District Two. And you seem like a good compliment to Tiffany, who I had on a couple of weeks ago.
Tiffany's great.
I hope you both, you know, have a, have a good chance of getting in District Two.
I think we have a good complement of skills too, which is kind of cool. She and I have had a chance to connect on some of that. And she's got some good skills and insights that I don't have. So I think that's why having 12 folks that have this diversity of backgrounds and skills is, uh, you know, is a really positive thing. I'm really optimistic about, you know, the, the new move to this new form of government.
Tiffany Penson?
Yeah, Pensen.
Pensen. Okay.
Yeah, Pensen. Yeah.
Yeah.
So who else is, who else have you had on Andy from District Two? Do you know?
That's what I was just saying. He's, he's only the second one I've had.
So Bob and Tiffany?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It took me a while to get, uh, someone from District Two, but I'm happy. Yeah. I've had people from every district now. And I'm trying to kind of equalize the number of people from districts that I have, but, um, it's a challenge. There's like 90 people running.
It's, you're doing a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, I was curious, what, like, what are people in your district? What are their top things that you hear about, concerns?
Yeah, it's, it's great. Uh, you know, one of the things that I, uh, I like to share is over the last four years, there's a, a group of us and it's a men's group. And I say a men's group, we started walking on Sundays around the Black Lives Matter incident.
I saw that on your Instagram.
We got a group of folks together and it wasn't me. I'm actually the, the photographer for the group. But, uh, and I love taking the photos and doing the posting, but there are a couple of, a couple of my friends that started it and it started small and then it expanded. And what happened is, is we'd walk about five miles every Sunday and rain or shine. And we've covered kind of every part of the city. And what I saw was a very different city than the narrative that was going on and blasting the city and showing all the negativity and all the problems and all the challenges. Now there are pockets and they're getting better. But it, it was one of those things that was kind of, um, you know, it just, it just dawned on me that the narrative was off base. And I wanted to kind of lean into, you know, changing that. So like-
What is the narrative that you're talking about?
Well, just the national narrative that Portland is burning basically, you know, and a lot of the media pushing some of that.
Is that, is that the narrative that it's currently burning?
Not as much now, but I think at the time, we started four years ago and it was a rugged time.
Well, it was burning technically. 189 seemed like a lot, but.
There were fires and they're, you know, and-
The police precinct set a fire in the jail was memorable. I mean, it was.
It was scary. It was a scary time, but we remember we walked all over the city. So we were walking areas that there was no issues in 90% of the areas.
Away from downtown.
Yeah. I mean, you know, when we went downtown.
In your neighborhood or anything.
Yeah. Yeah. And there were still issues. You'd see issues, you know, but I think at the, so, so that kind of, in, in those, you know, and I say men's group because men are terrible about opening up and talking. So we forced ourselves to do it and we supported each other. There's been divorces. There's been cancer survivors. And, you know, loss, I mean, so it's been a great kind of collective, you know, way for us to get together and talk and explore, experience the city. And so I talked to a lot of folks, not just in the district, but around the city. And this was long before I decided to run, right? As I mentioned, I've never pursued politics. Uh, so I come in with a little bit of a different spin on solving problems and listening to folks. I appreciate your comments about being approachable, approachable, I think, you know?
It's refreshing sometimes to, you know, talk to people who aren't in the political lane their entire life and, um, come at it from a fresh angle. Now, I'm not trying to plug my own show name, but it's a fresh, you know?
I like that. Hey, we're aligned. I didn't make the connection until this now. Uh, but you know, and talking to the folks to answer your question, I mean, it's, it's safety. It's safety. It's safety. And, you know, and there's so many components to safety, right? I mean, you know, that have to be addressed. I mean, obviously, you know, measure 110 has been repealed, so I'm grateful for that. And I'll get the drugs off the street.
Well, it was amended. It wasn't repealed, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
It's amended. Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's September.
It should be different. I don't, I don't know what's going to happen, but yes, September hopefully should be, we should see different things. And I think with Nathan Vazquez, this district attorney, that'll be his office in January. Maybe hopefully I think we'll see different things coming out of there in January.
I hope so too. Yeah. And I think the city, to, to your point, this is, I don't care which part of North or Northeast Portland I go to.
Right.
I don't care if I'm talking to, you know, I'm in the black community, talking with, with a person that's sitting at a softball game and, or talking to someone who owns property or business or whatever, they all want the same thing. Everybody wants the streets back, you know? We want our, you know, we want our public transportation back. We want, you know, clean streets and the tarps and the tents and everything removed. And, you know, we've got a lot of resources.
Yes.
That we are not leveraging to solve the problem. And, you know, I, um, I will say that I have a close family member, I'll just leave it at that, that has suffered with addiction and, uh, and prostitution. And so, uh, you know, for a large part of her adult life. And, um, what I, what I saw was she was doing better when she had guardrails and she had structure and we, she was in a facility or a place. She would, you know, be the one who would be up at five, working out and then reading the Bible and then making food for everybody. I mean, she's a, you know, lovely person, but she's addicted. And so, uh, you know, I think that, you know, the, the, the prevailing, I think, approach of just like letting people have this freedom, they're dying because we're, we don't have guardrails around them. They're dying on the streets, right? We have to, I think, have some compassion, but I think they need to participate in serving their, saving their own rescue. Was it what Tony Robbins would say, participate in your own rescue. And so I think we need to maybe, uh, you know, make it a little tougher for them to say, no, I just want to go back and keep doing drugs. It's like, eh, that's not working for you. You're dying. It's not working for our community, you know? So I think we need to have a little firmer hand, uh, in that process and still provide the resources and the support, which are grossly under, you know, like we don't have the behavioral health facilities and the people that, and the challenges. But one of the things that I bring up in, you know, in the private sector, if you're having a labor shortage, you raise salaries and you recruit nationally. I mean, let's go out and pull people into Portland. If that's our number one thing, we have the money. Let's reallocate the resources in a creative way and bring folks in and say, hey, you know, let's go to, you know, another city and pull talented, talented folks in, pay them 20% more. Give them three months free rent, something like that. Whatever it takes to get folks in here, we have the resources, but we're not, I don't think, looking at it in a creative way.
Yeah.
And in the enterprise, that's all you do. Cause your resources are constantly limited and being challenged.
And you're saying, yeah, for those behavioral health issues, recruit for that purpose. Yeah.
It's a, it's a, if it's a shortage of labor, you know, in any business, you have to do that. It's like, okay, when I'm running a sales team and I need top sales folks, I mean, we gotta go recruit. We gotta pay more, whatever it takes.
Yeah.
And you just reallocate resources accordingly.
How do we over, how do you, I guess specifically though, overcome the county? Because Multnomah County, as you know, is in charge of behavioral health.
Yeah.
And in my opinion, the chair, Jessica Vega Peterson, is the reason we are, it's, there's an, I don't think she's a bad person. I just think she sees things through a different lens.
Yeah.
I think there's a ideological block there. How do you bridge that divide between your philosophy, which is intervention and participation?
And accountability and yeah.
Which is very different.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. Enablement.
Right. Very different.
And people are dying because of that, you know, that enablement. And, uh,
Yeah. Well, the county budget, what, what did I estimate? I mean, I looked at that county budget. Was it, it was millions of needles?
Oh, yeah.
For next year. I mean, do you remember that?
Yeah, they're paying for a certain amount. Yeah.
Needles and tents.
I was just gonna-
Just needles. You know, not rehab, not-
Well, along those same lines, I was just thinking like you're, get points in, get points for me because a lot of people, I feel like, don't know about the county sort of treatment issues. And you just outlined like everything they should be doing.
Yes.
So I'm glad that you know that, like, that's just super important.
I appreciate it. And I think that-
And yeah, I'm curious to her question.
Yeah. I think that, I think that she's in there for two more years.
Right.
And, uh, I think that the narrative in the public, you know, uh, uh, position and thinking has radically changed since 110 passed. And maybe when she was put into office. And I think it's going to take, you know, that public, when, 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 when folks really start speaking out in loud voices, I think it will start to shift. I also think that, you know, I like what Renee Gonzalez is doing as far as challenging the, uh, you know, the deflection issues that he's pushed back on and putting out the tents. He goes, you put the tents out and then I gotta go clean them up. Like you're not helping the situation, right? We're creating this cyclical problem. And I, I would say, you know, um, sometimes folks get placed in positions and they don't have the skills to handle the responsibility that they have. You get voted into an office or in a position, it's, you know, and I, I just say, you know, but I'll just leave it at that. I think that, um, it's the, there's a, there's an, I, there's a idealistic component, but there's also just having the skills to effectively make change. And, um, you know, and I think that's, uh, I think we've got some skill gaps in how to, how to solve that problem. I do believe that everyone wants to see the problem solved.
Right.
That, you know, everybody does. But I, I think where people get hooked up, uh, get hung up on are the tactics.
Yeah.
And how you get there. And so I'm, with my background and my mindset, I'm what I call outcome focused. It's a Tony Robbins thing. It's like you focus on the results you want and there's probably dozens of ways to get there. But if you get hung up in the tactics specifically on how to get there, we own this part or you own that part, or I've got to make this decision. You know, when I am managing people, I'm like, okay, you're going to make that decision. You're accountable for it, but it, we need this delivered on time, on budget. Right? And if it doesn't, if you're off path, we're going to come back and talk about it. So I think that's where I talk about transparency and having, you know, kind of a mindset around getting to results.
Yeah. Well, I was just saying, thanks for like answering that. Cause I feel like, um, I ask a lot of people that and they, you know, don't address it as directly as you just did. A lot of people just say, well, I, you know, we're going to have to work with the county and-
They talk about housing.
Yeah. And, but I just think it's, I like your approach because you're being a realist about it and just like, this is the situation we're in and we have to confront reality sometimes. And, um, and also I think what you said is, you know, true, at least from my perspective right now of like, if, if we do have this majority city council and a good mayor in place, that's a lot of, uh, voices going at the county. Um, and I think that can make a big difference.
I, I, I think, uh, you know, and I, I don't-
There's a lot of political weight there.
There's a lot of, and I think, you know, um, uh, you know, Renee Gonzalez has endorsed me and I've been, I endorse Renee. And there, the other candidates, there's good candidates, there's good thinking, but the thing, the thing that I like about Renee is one, he's had kind of the toughest bureaus.
Yes. Public safety.
Public safety.
The one thing that everybody is concerned about.
And it's been tough, right? And you've got the, the, you know, the police forces understaffed, under resourced. And then you've got, and fire is understaffed and under resourced. And then you've got this perfect collision of the riots and you've got COVID and you've got, you know, uh, open drug use.
Yeah.
You've got all of those things that, that he's been trying to navigate. But if you look at even what he's done most recently and pushing back on the county, on this deflection stuff, on the tents and, you know, the needles.
Even the, yeah, like I keep thinking about the ambulance thing, which is crazy to me because, um, the county basically was digging its heels in. And then they finally just changed the policy now. And I always just think about all the time and the lives that were affected by that delay.
It's ridiculous. I mean, that's where, you know, and so I think he provides the leadership and, uh, and I think if we have, when he's mayor and when I'm on city council, you know, we need seven folks. And really you need six because he's a tiebreaker. So I think we're getting closer to having, uh, a collective voice rather than, you know, that, rather than having this disparate views on, you know, maybe it's, you know, people have a specific agenda that they're most concerned about, the things that, and I, and I say this about Renee, you know, I may not agree with him on a hundred percent. I don't. You know, uh, but I will tell you that middle 80%, we're locked in.
Yeah.
And if there are differences, we can talk about them. But, you know, anyone who says, well, I'll only endorse a candidate if I believe, if they believe these 16 things. I'm like, come on, man. Like we need to move the ball down the field to use a sport. Sorry, hate to use sports analogies, but I was a quarterback and a baseball guy.
So excited for NFL coming up.
Yeah, me too. Go Seahawks. Yeah, I know. Yeah. So anyway, hopefully that answers your question.
No, that's great too. I was, I point that out a lot of people in my own district. Cause like, I am a big fan of Daniel Demello in my district and I don't agree with him on everything, but just like you, you're approachable. And I, and I can talk with him about anything, you know? And I feel like you're the same way. So it's just, I don't know. That's the ideal candidate for me right now.
I appreciate that. Yeah. We, we, you know, there's 160,000 folks that live in District Two and, you know,
It's a lot.
It's a lot and everybody has the same challenge, but I think with this new form of government, it's beautiful because now we're not managing the bureaus. So we are community liaisons and representatives and we're writing policy that affects the communities and, you know, in a direct ways as well. And, and I think that that's where I've gotten a lot of, yeah, cause running these campaigns is my first time doing it. It can be exhausting, but it, but when you're out with people, I get inspired because they respond well to what the message is. They respond, they're engaged. And, you know, and, and engagement comes in a lot of different forms, right? I mean, some folks are just passionately upset and some folks are, you know, optimistic. Some folks are saying, why are we expanding to 12 when four didn't work or five didn't work? And, you know, but I think this new form of government, like I said, with the, having the professional managers and having the six groups of bureaus together, and then having a strong mayor, I think we can move things forward.
We kind of just talked about some of this stuff, but, and I know this is more county, county, uh, I don't want to say BS, but it's, it's in the county territory.
We're good with it.
There's just, there's so much, uh, recent talk and controversy over this deflection center and, and that kind of stuff. I'm just curious, like your take on the September deadline they're trying to pursue to get that thing open and
Yeah.
A lot of the recent pushback. There's like a daycare that's trying to sue that or threatening to sue them now.
Elementary school or something. Yeah. Daycare that's right there.
Preschool, yeah.
Yeah, preschool. Yeah. I, I think this again is, um, kind of, we're just keep throwing bandages on the issues, right? And I think that's a big part of it. I think the deflection issue, uh, you have to hold folks accountable. You can't just let them, you know, either go to treatment or go back on the streets, right? And just return to, they're dying because we are enabling this behavior and the rest of us are suffering. So I do think we need to have some firmness in, in the, in the deflection, as I mentioned, to a point where we've got to make it more uncomfortable for them to default to their addictive habits in lifestyle. And so, uh, you know, so I think that, I think that, uh, you know, Renee, again, this is another area that he's kind of leaning in on with the county and I appreciate his guidance there. I think we have to add an element of accountability and I, and I do understand and talking to some health experts, mental health experts, as I've tried to really get my arms around this. This fentanyl thing is, is different. You know, people talk about sobering centers. Well, the fentanyl thing, if you put someone, you know, for 24 hours and you just take their fentanyl away, they come out like crazed animals because the addictive compet, uh, uh, components of it are so powerful. And so, you know, one of the, one of the folks I was talking with- And so, you know, one of the, one of the folks I was talking with said, you know, you really need three days and they need to be medicated so that they can kind of come down.
Yeah.
You know, as opposed to just this cold water thing where, because when they return to the streets and they're in that crazed state, it's an escalated issue.
Right, right.
So, you know, it's not like when we think of the old sobering centers, well, oh yeah, you're drunk, go sleep it off, right? You know.
The drunk tank.
Yeah, the drunk tank.
To call it.
Yeah, the drunk tank. Yeah. So I think, I think that there has to be, you know, we have to address it in a way, um, that, uh, that deals with, again, not just put a Band-Aid on it. I, I think that this idea of the facility, from what I understand, the decision was kind of made behind closed doors. It didn't get any community input.
Right.
And now you have, okay, well, we found a building and now they're like, well, we can't, now it's gonna cost millions of dollars to get the building ready. Well, you didn't think about that before you pulled the trigger on that. So that lack of, excuse me, that lack of really thinking about, thinking through the problem and just trying to come up with something fast is exactly what, you know, has got us into this position. So we need to be more intentional, we need to be more inclusive. We need to be more strategic about how we approach it. Otherwise, it's kind of the same thing as, you know, bring them in, they sign a piece of paper and then send them back to the street. I'm like, we're just enabling, you know, this, this pattern that again, is leading to their deaths and leading to a massive amount of unsafety, you know, lack of safety. You know, on the streets. So it's unacceptable.
Yeah, and I totally agree with that, kind of reimagining of, cause I've talked about a lot on this show of like the old, like cheers and all that stuff that was kind of designed for alcohol and, you know, not these modern drugs like fentanyl. Cause I've heard on, actually on your show, I was just listening to an episode of, where you pointed out with shelters too. It's like, you know, for people that are addicted, they might go into a shelter and be fine for one night, but then they're just back on the street in a few days and.
Oh, yeah.
They're not part of that rehabilitation continuum. And like I said, I agree with you, reimagining that for like new drugs, it's just so important.
It's complicated. And I, you know, and I think the biggest frustration I think I have and a lot of folks have, there's, when I look at the, the houselessness situation, right? And they say there's six thousand people. I'm like, that's cause not everybody's raising their hand.
Right.
There's more than that, you know?
There are more than that. You can just use your eyes and ears walking around.
Yeah, I never see the same, I rarely see the same people. Like, it's like this move, this thing.
A small city size of people.
It is. It is. And so when I look at that issue, let's just say it is the six thousand. I believe it's more. But what I understand is about a third of them are there for financial reasons. They're not there for, they're not addicts, right? They're folks that are houseless because of economic reasons. It could be the single mom and all of a sudden lost, couldn't pay rent.
Are you, are you talking, I guess we need to make a distinction and Jesse Work taught me to do this. Are we talking about street? People we would call street homeless or sheltered homeless? Cause when they count, you know, that point in time count, which we all know is so unreliable that the federal government has us do because it's all self-reported. And I don't, some, somebody alluded to the wait till you hear about how they do it. And I, I was like, that's for another show, but I don't even know. Um, it sounds like it's a whole odyssey. Do you know about that? Did somebody talk to you about this? Those point in time counts, how they do it?
I, I don't know exactly, but I've always, yeah, just taken it as like, as like a honor system kind of reporting.
Yeah, but I think.
But I agree, I agree with you, cause I hear that a lot of like, are these, you're saying are there people that are kind of couch surfing or?
Well, that's the real question because like, look, we've all been in situations, certainly myself included and relatively recently, because my husband died this year. When your financial situation changes on a dime, it does. And the, I'm not in this position, but I, I have been, I have been, I've couch served, I've done it. The go-to is not pitch a tent on the sidewalk. I mean, I don't think that would ever occur to me.
Right, right.
So I, I, I also have, uh, my sister is a homeless opioid addict and I've talked to a lot of family members with, with people who struggle with addiction. And though the people, by the time they get these family members that we have get to the street, we all know what happened. They have burned through.
Yeah.
Their community.
Yeah.
They, there isn't, we can't help them anymore because we're not professionals.
Right.
And then they're on the street.
Right.
Or they're, they're in and out. We try to help them, but you know, what, we, we're not detox, we're not rehab, we're not mental health professionals. We can't dispense medically assisted treatment. We're just, we're pretty helpless. And I think a lot of family members are desperate and looking, the people who are saying, hey, this is a housing issue, or if we could just solve this with a universal basic income, that makes me a little crazy.
Yeah.
When it comes to street homeless, like people literally sleeping on a sidewalk. Cause I don't think sober people sleep on sidewalks. It's just a crazy guess, but I, I've never met one.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a great question. It's a great distinction when I think in terms of that population. And it could be couch surfing, it could be, you know, that whole universe, it could include that. But the thing that I look at is again, I look at the symptom and I also look at, okay, what's the problem?
Of course.
And there are, from what I read, about ten percent of Portland's population, city population is like a paycheck away from losing everything.
Yeah.
And like you say, we've been, I've been there.
It's also, I know like a nationwide.
And it is a nationwide phenomenon. Yeah, it is. It's a nationwide phenomenon. So when I look at that solution, I'll give you an example of one idea that, you know, that I have is the foster care program as an example.
Well, that's, yeah.
That, those kids that have to leave at eighteen.
It's a ticket to poverty.
It's a ticket to poverty when they come out. So why not look at?
And drug addiction.
Use and drug addiction. So that's that, again, where, where does it start? So, and these are troubled kids largely anyway, right? But I got the idea because my mom, as a way to supplement our income, would have foster children stay with us. And some of them were, you know, immigrants and they were really smart students and they were great. And some of them were challenged, right? Or some of them were friends of the family that she was able to bring in and put under the foster care umbrella so she could earn some money and, and help support our family. When, when we look at the current foster care system, there are some, some exceptions of having, where you can stay beyond eighteen in a home. But why not use county resources and say, you can stay until twenty-three?
Right.
It'd be, and keep paying, you know?
But we let kids be on your health insurance till they're twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-seven now.
Twenty-seven, thank you. Well, yeah, you have older children. I mean, I need to get ready for this.
Yeah.
Minor.
Yeah.
Will be there with their foot under the table for a long time. But I mean, that's how it works. And so why aren't we doing that with those children?
And that seems to be right in the crosshairs, so to speak, of the county's mission, the county's goal, or like territory.
Yes, yes. So you're doing, you're, you're actually doing a preventative thing.
Right.
Someone could stay there, maybe they can go get a trade at the community college.
Right.
And, you know, they don't have to worry about these other components in life because they're not ready for them yet.
And why can't we subsidize that? Why can't we subsidize trade school? Or why can't we do in programs where we introduce them to these steelworker unions or ironworker or electrician or plumbing or anything lucrative? I mean, those are lucrative careers.
Jobs.
And that kind of goes back to what you're saying, especially if people that go down the addiction path, if you give them that structure.
Yeah.
Kind of helps, you know.
Especially early on, you know, it's that preventative thing. Somebody's eighteen and all of a sudden they don't have a place to live, they don't have the resources, they gotta get a job. That's where they end up, you know.
There's no preparation for that.
Exactly. They don't have the life skills.
How to balance a bank account.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. So those are, that's kind of how I look at it. Like, you know, what's the whole, the holistic view of it? And how can we solve, you know, parts of it, right? And the, and the thing that I look at, it is, it is nuanced because the different, the needs are different. But the thing that, like, if we think about it this way, and this is kind of a crazy, um, is let's say there's seven hundred thousand people, you know, in the city, whatever the number is. It's a one percent of the population that is over indexed and causing all of this.
I know.
It's one percent.
Right, right.
And that's why I say, when I say Portland's not burning, it's cause ninety-nine percent of Portland isn't burning. You know, there are challenges that a lot of cities have, but everything that we're talking about right now and the scale of the problems that we're focusing on right now, rightfully so. But it's a one percent of the population issue.
But, but I think the other issue is they're every, that's everywhere. I mean, it's, this is not Chicago or New York City or, I mean, in those places, they shelter their homeless. This is not, you don't get, try to pitch a tent in Times Square. Just try it.
Yeah.
See, see how long, how many seconds you last. They will come get you and, and drive you somewhere and say, you have to go here.
Yeah.
You don't get to do this.
I, yeah.
And here, the, everybody is everywhere.
Yeah.
It, I don't care what neighborhood you're in. If you're in within Multnomah County, you've experienced it. I don't, I don't even care if you're in the West Hills. They will, they will find you because it's, I think a lot of it is an untreated mental illness, pretty severe. And this, it, this fentanyl addiction and this meth addiction that we can't seem to wrap our heads around.
Yeah.
And this sort of desperation for these drugs and, um.
Well, the one percent thing's interesting. I wish I could remember the figure, but according to Daniel DeMello, who was on the joint office of homeless services budget advisory committee. Uh, at this event a couple of weeks ago, he was saying, I believe it was eighty or ninety thousand dollars the county is spending per individual. I don't know how he came up with that number.
Per year.
It's low.
Yeah.
Per year, yeah. And, and that just seems like you were, I don't know if that's what you were going, saying of this outweighed kind of, we're putting a lot into this, but it's just not very effective. And so that's why I think people keep talking about it. It's like the results, we just don't see.
Well, I mean, cause it's a visual, visual too. We have to step over people on the streets, you know, and I, I usually.
So upsetting. It's so, it's so traumatic for everybody, mostly for that person, but for all of us.
Yes.
To be in the middle of this collective trauma and that's not normal.
No.
It's not normal to step over people and keep walking.
Yeah.
I mean, there's something wrong with us.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that we've enabled a, a pattern of behavior that other cities don't, uh, you know, allow.
No, they don't.
And, and I think, you know, again, we have the resources to be compassionate, but I go back to, people say, you know, well, they won't go to treatment until they're ready.
Right.
And I'm like, um, that's not working.
Right.
You're dying.
Right.
Because you don't have the, um, you know, be, because you're addicted and you would rather stay addicted because it makes you feel better in the moment.
Disease.
It's a brain, it's exactly right. So we are not helping them by enabling them. And we do need to, we do need to have them participate in their own rescue, like I said earlier.
Yeah, some kind of off-ramp or exit ramp.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to help provide that.
Yeah, and I totally agree with that. I talk to people a lot about, like, if, if they come at me with that line of when, when they're ready, I'm always just like, does this person know an addict? Have you ever met an addict?
They're never ready.
That's not what I see.
Yeah, and certainly not in their family. I mean, that's where you really see it in an intimate way. I mean, just the destructive nature, self-destructive mostly, but just to everybody you touch.
And like you were saying with structure, uh, like I've known people that, and I, I don't even necessarily agree with AA, but I've known people that that just completely flipped their life in a positive direction. And, and it gave them that structure that they needed to kind of.
I think, I think to your point too about the, you know, um, the family member, my relationship broke off with my family member, this particular member, because I would not enable the behavior. And that's all, and that's, and that's all they wanted. They just want money, you know, and they're hustling and they're trying to get their next fix. And when you cut that off, they hate you because you're not.
Useful to them now.
You're not, exactly. So there was, there's nothing we can do, like you said, and so I've had to, I've had to cut this person away from, you know, out of my life and.
So painful.
Uh, and it is painful, but you know, I have to protect my core family and my kids and I can't have the craziness around my household, right? So.
And it doesn't help your family member.
No.
I mean, it's just killing them.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Literally killing them. You might as well just put a gun to their head.
That's right.
So, so then it, but like you said, it's if they won't, yeah, if we're just waiting for them to call and say they want to go to rehab, that almost never happens. And then what frustrates me is we have, I think we now have three, thanks to, uh, measure one-ten, right before that reform passed. I think they saw those political winds blowing and they opened up that coalition that's part of the Drug Policy Alliance, one-ten, that brought us one-ten, opened up a, I think it's a detox. So what, I think we have three now. It's not a lot. It's not, there's not a lot of beds in any of them, but to the extent people do want help, there are lines out the door for those places every day.
Yeah.
And so what about all the, the minute they need help? Don't we need, isn't that the low hanging fruit?
That's the low.
Shouldn't the county just be there i- in that line, triaging every single one of those people with like a tablet or something and slotting them into different facilities?
Love that. That's exactly the nimbleness that we need, right? You gotta meet the moment when the moment is there, not when you're. And one of the things that I, I often think about is when I see, um, bureaucracies, and I've seen in big companies too. But they try to design a solution, this massive big solution.
Right.
So then what happens is by the time they get it installed and they get all the stakeholders, they all the money lined up and all the budget and they've done all the research and had all the consultants, all the advisory, they've done all of this. Well, it may take two years to solve for this big problem that they're trying to solve for. And what always happens, I know at least from my experience, when you create a big solution, one, a couple of things happen. One is it's, it's, it's never the right solution because you've, and then you spend your time justifying why we spent all these resources and all this time doing it. Uh, and then the, the, the second thing that happens is in the time that it takes for you to implement that, the problem has changed. So you're now solving for a problem two years ago and today's problem has changed. Like, look at, look at, yeah, it's evolved. And so in the private sector, what you do is you do pilots and it's kind of like you do these small tests and you try it and you tweak it and you modify it and then you expand it that way. As you learn, but you're solving the problem while you're doing it and you're learning while you're doing it, rather than create this monster solution.
That, yeah.
You know, and, and so in the private sector, like I would, you know, when I'm at Microsoft, I would never say, hey, you know, let's go roll this out to a hundred million users.
Yeah.
Let's test it in this market.
Well, that's a perfect, you know, example, cause I just think it's almost like a beta.
Yeah, same thing. Exactly, same thing. And now you have the resources to do it. One of the ideas that I have, um, around this mental health issue is that there, I met with a gentleman that owns a private, uh, behavioral care facility. So it's privately funded. It's, it's, it's an LLC, so it's not a nonprofit. Well, the city won't, or the county won't work with him because it's not a nonprofit.
Interesting.
He's about three times more effective in the results he produces, right? So.
You won't work with him because he's not in a nonprofit.
He can't get the funding.
The contract.
He can't get the contract and the funding.
Because it has to be to a nonprofit.
So that's his explanation. So in my mind, isn't that crazy? And he's, he's three X.
I mean, it sounds right.
He's three X.
Even, yeah, with those kind of results.
He's getting the results. So my approach would be, okay, let me have some money. I want to do a joint venture with him. I want to see if we can expand the beds. He has, he has the whole infrastructure in place. So let me have a couple of million bucks and let's try this. You got a hundred million bucks sitting in the bank. Let's see if he can produce better results over the next twenty-four months.
Can it possibly be any worse than the?
It's, you know, so that's how I, that's how, that's how I think about it. Oh my gosh. So, you know, just things like that. That's kind of how I look at it, right?
Cause even that example, it seems like, at least that way we'd have more receipts and kind of trackable data. Cause a lot of the issue with these nonprofits is we can't get that data.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
And they won't provide it.
Track it and all that stuff.
That's one of the things that I want to start looking under the hood at as well. You know, I think that the fiscal responsibility component is another one of my priorities. And it's, I think that, and that's, is again, what everybody's asking for. It's like, okay, we're spending all this money, what's happening? You know, I think there's like eighty-eight nonprofits and a lot of them are doing great work, but I, I would just like.
Are they? I mean, do we know it?
We don't know. That's why we gotta at least ask the question.
And shout, I was gonna say shout out to Mingus Maps for kind of, I don't know if he, I won't say he started that, but he challenged some of those nonprofits a couple of years ago.
Good move. That's a good move.
I just think it's scrutiny that we need, you know?
Well, this private placement, you know, uh, facility that I visited, um, I mean, he's, he, um, privately owned. I mean, he has to produce results.
Right.
He's Medicare, he's Medicaid funded and he has a lot of challenges with that. Uh, but if he doesn't produce the results, right, then he doesn't survive.
Yeah, it's a matter of survival.
Exactly. So it's not, and his, his example, he says, yeah, I know nonprofits, I'm in this world and I see guys driving around in a brand new car. They don't know anything about the problem, but they've got this big contract. So, you know, and it makes him crazy. And so it makes all of us crazy. It's like, look, you know, we want results. And we can't, you know, there's urgency around this issue and it's like moving the ball down the, you know, you just keep moving the problem down, you know, downstream is not the answer, right? And finger pointing is not the answer. It's like, let's take action.
Right.
And even in small ways to figure out how we can move things forward.
Yeah, I was just saying, and thanks for bringing that up, cause I actually didn't know too much about that of like, cause I think, yeah, the city should be open to work with anybody that's effective, regardless of if it's a business or a nonprofit or whatever that is. Um, and if they're closing off opportunities to business right now, that seems kind of ridiculous.
Especially when we need beds and we need healthcare professionals, you know, mental health professionals. And he's got this infrastructure and now it's, uh, we've got to pull every lever. And, you know, the, the, and, and I think it goes back to, you're asking about working with the county and that operation. I think the will of the people is going to, you know, is got to a point where, you know, uh, they're, they're, you know, they're banging the drums louder. And I think that will help, you know, uh, and I, I hope it'll start with this new form of government with the city. Like I say, getting the right leader in there, getting the right council structure in, in place and the right folks in place, uh, that we can start to move, move forward, you know? So I'm, I'm optimistic about it.
Yeah. I have a couple more questions here. Um, I, I was, I've been asking candidates about the balance of police and PSR and what you would change. I, I was, I've been asking candidates about the balance of police and PSR and what you would change with each, each of them. Um. And I know also you got the PPA endorsement and the fire endorsement. Is that right?
Both of them. Yeah. Yeah. No, that, that, that came together and I, uh, no, I was, I was honored to, to get that. Um, I think that. When, when I look at, and again, I'll step back and look at kind of my view of safety. My daughter, say she's 20, let's say she's working downtown and she's working at a restaurant. She gets off at midnight. I would like her to be able to take the max home.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right? Seems reasonable, right?
Yeah.
Not, you know, no way we're doing it today. So I want to increase the visibility of whether it's public safety, whether it's PSR. Whether it's police force, right? I want to see a fully funded police force, but I also want to see increased visibility in places like that. Of folks that can, you know, deescalate. And I know PSR has limitations on what they can do.
I mean, an incredible amount. It's actually stunning.
It's, yeah, they're, they're very limited and they're still, they're still providing an effective, some effective resources. I mean, they've, I know that police are having to show up for far less, you know? Incidents that they may have had to, had to before, which is part of the goal. But I would like to expand, uh, their skillset.
Yeah.
And their knowledge because they are on the street on the front line. They have a lot of value and a lot of insights to what's happening. And maybe they have to, maybe part of their job is running routes, you know, in a uniform on max, right? Or whatever, like, and we start to get some visibility. And they can deescalate, you know, they can, they know how to do that. Of course they can do the rehab or I mean, the drug treatment or the, you know, um, the Narcan or whatever, but I'm talking about expanding their skills. And expanding them so that we get again, more visibility in public places so that we can act as a deterrent. They don't have to be able to. You know, fully operate as officers, but I think I would feel safer if I knew there was a safety officer on the max for my daughter, right? And then it's clean, right? And it's all of these things. And so those are, those are kind of creative ways that I would like to utilize.
I like, I like the idea of routes too. I've never heard that.
Just have them run routes, you know, that's part of their job.
Transit, I just learned about this. There is a transit program in place. That some of the Multnomah County sheriffs are pulled in on, and then the Multnomah County District Attorney's Office has some. Even transit deputy district attorney people, which I think, I didn't know about until recently.
That type of thing, that's where I'd like to see investments.
To expand that.
Yeah. I'd like to see investments in, in that, just visibility. The other thing that I, you know, and I, I even talked to, um, to Robert King, who's the chief of staff. For Bob Day, yeah, about community policing, for the police chief. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Uh, and I, I just, I talked to him about community policing and growing up where I did. And some of the stuff that I saw, right? Um, you go to certain communities and you know, if they're more affluent or white communities, and I've lived in them, you know, I lived in Woodinville, which is basically just like Lake Oswego. When I was working at Microsoft, you know?
In Washington.
In Washington, when I was up in that area, you see those communities see police officers, they feel safer. You go to some communities, they see police officers, they feel more threatened. So that I, that concept of safety is also a perception and reality. And so one of the things that I, I would like to see us do is I think that the police force in neighborhoods of color, whether they're Hispanic or black or underserved. They should reflect, they should look like the community they serve and we should strive for more community policing.
Will be difficult in Portland, Oregon.
It will be difficult, but I, I'll tell you like I, you know, the, the example that I use is. If I, if I, if I went into Jeff High School and I talked to the football team and they got three captains and these kids are great students, right? They're, they're leaders, they're second or third generation Portland. I'm like, dude, you can make a hundred thousand dollars a year.
They're working very hard to recruit people just like that.
I, I think they have to change the narrative because I think when I pitched it to, so my son played quarterback at Grant and most of his friends were skilled players, which tend to be black kids. So they're living at my house all the time. I talked to Tariq and I talked to Marquise. I'm like. What about this? Look at it this way. Would you rather have someone who's military chained coming in from an area outside of the city? They've never been around black people. And you drop them into North Portland. Well, that's a bit of a, and I'm, I'm not going to make a generalization, but if you haven't been around black people and you hear a tone or you see someone. You know, you may look, you look at th- th- this kid Tariq, who's a kid that I love. He's like my other son, you know, and he may, he may have tats. At one time he had dreads. You may be threatened by him, but he's a great kid. And it's just your lack of understanding.
A lot of our police have tattoos. EYR has tattoos. They all, you can be a police officer with a neck tattoo.
I see it now.
Yeah. Yes, I do too. They're all tatted up. I mean, I think, I don't, I don't know. I think. It seems, they did some polling on this with, with the D H M firm. And I, and I think this is why Renee Gonzalez won that East County block because the data says. That the most diverse neighborhoods in Portland might feel overpleased, but they want police.
They do want police.
They, they don't.
Yeah, that's true.
This defund effort where we got rid of resource officers in schools.
Yeah.
Really hurt us and it hurt children.
Yes.
And the data says that I, our police had just won an award for that.
Yeah.
And that, how do we get these children to learn about who, who police officers are? And that they can assist you if they're not in schools and this idea that they're going to come in without a uniform and pretend like they're not police officers, because that's the only way our children can interact with police. I don't know how these children are going to be adults in our community if they can't interact with police.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they, they have these deep, deep generational, like you were saying, generational neighborhood. They knew who was coming up. They knew who dad was. They knew where he lived. All of that is gone.
Yeah.
And, and if, if we put them back, which I think most parents at most schools would like to see.
Especially with the shootings and the incidents that are escalating.
Yeah, my neighborhood high school is Cleveland.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was, I was just actually thinking about this because I saw the Clark County up in Vancouver, Washington sheriff's office just re, put their, uh, SROs back into their schools up there. And then I was looking into how many. We have, I, I thought they were totally gone, but there's, there is a small number of schools who have them up here, I guess, from Multnomah County Sheriff's Office, according to what I found, but, but it's not all of them.
School resource officers? Which ones?
I, I don't know the exact ones, but it was like.
They're not in PPS. Are they in Portland Public?
Um, I'd have to go back.
Multnomah County wouldn't surprise me. Multnomah County wouldn't surprise me. I bet like Gresham, probably Gresham, probably. There might be, uh, Troutdale or that would.
It's still a majority of them don't, but, um, but yeah, I was just looking into it and, and I was like, oh wow.
Well, when I, when I was a kid, uh, yeah, when I was a kid, there was a police officer that helped with the baseball team when I was in little league. And I was a young kid growing up in this community and mentored me and was a role model. I wanted to be a cop. I thought, oh, that's a cool thing to do.
Yeah.
Well, it's because, you know, he would do Easter egg hunts with us. He'd come out in his uniform, but he had a smile on his face. He was approachable. And that's where, and I think.
Actually part of the community.
Yeah, part of the community. That's what I mean by community policing, like you're engaged.
They'd love to bring it back, Bob. I, they were kneecapped. And so that's why we don't have it anymore. It's actually, we did have it. We had community policing. We have, thanks to Nathan Vaskis, who created the program, working under Mike Schmidt, we have neighborhood district attorneys.
I actually didn't know until I was listening to one of your recent things, this whole neighborhood DA.
Yeah, we have neighborhood DAs and Nathan started that. And we also have, um, we have neighborhood resource officers. It's called the neighborhood resource team. Every neighborhood has one.
Yeah.
And, um.
I didn't know that.
So yes, yes, we do. And so most neighborhood associations work with, if you have a public safety officer that's part of your neighborhood association, they need to be working with the neighborhood resource team. Which is under P P B. So Central Precinct has one, um, Northeast, they all have their own team. And they're incredibly responsive. They're very personable. I mean, it's, Bob, it is the definition. I know this because I was the safety officer for, um. The Eastmoreland Neighborhood Association. They, it is the definition of community policing. It's things like there's a elderly neighbor who heard a bump in the night. Could you go check on her? They go check on her. There's a van following kids around. We don't, I don't have anything to pinpoint, but here's the description. We're going to let everybody know. Some cars, I mean, just something that sounds ticky tack in Portland, because I know what they're dealing with, you know, on any given mornings. I mean, the other day somebody was shot downtown at seven AM, but I'm talking to them and they're working on it. They're part of Central Precinct, but, but I'm talking to them about stuff like, hey. A line of cars had their windows blown out one night and everything was ransacked. And they'll say, okay, we'll increase patrols along that street. I mean, it is rapid. They'll call, they called me, um, they texted me, they had my cell phone number. They get cell phone numbers from. Their precinct that they can use to call, to text, to email, and they do. And I knew all of them. There were three.
I love it.
So it's happening. It's just, I don't know that we're using it.
I'd imagine too, if they were working with the neighborhood associations, they'd be at events, kind of like you were talking, like all the neighborhood events and.
I mean, we, we would pull them in and, um. And also there are, so P P B, look, if you're interested in bringing safety to your community. Please call P P B and ask and see if somebody can come speak to them because, you know, we had a sergeant from Central who wasn't even part of the neighborhood resource team. Who just came to talk about what's going on in our precinct and, and answer questions, any questions. And then just sit there and listen to people and he stayed as long as people wanted him to.
I love it.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I'm curious about your idea of, because I hear a lot of the, like, when I was in my twenties, it was popular and it still comes back, this idea that, hey, we need to have all officers live in the city. And from my understanding, it was like unconstitutional to national, some kind of level, but, but I, I do like your idea of like, if you could incentivize people from the neighborhood to get into those positions.
I think it's, I think it's a great career.
Yeah. Cause that's the problem we have is people don't want to.
Well, the perception because, and that's why if you start young, because the perception is.
That's right.
They're hearing it from their brothers or their older, their parents, you know, the perception of what police are and what the, you know, the issues are. But if you start younger, like I was exposed, you know, to some positive experiences. I was exposed to some negative experiences too. So I told, when I said at the. And went through the process, uh, with the police association, I explained that, you know? Um, and so it's conflicting, right? There's a little bit of confliction there, but at the same time, my belief is that, you know, if you, if you. If you change the way that you present it to the community and you go into, and you talk to these kids in that way. Making a hundred thousand dollars a year, buying a home, having benefits, serving, serving your own community.
Yeah.
Think about it. And that's why I said, would you rather somebody? Yeah. Would you rather have someone from Medford who's never been around black people, serving your black community? Or would you rather serve your community yourself where you're coaching and you're out in the community?
Yeah.
You know this kid and the kid steals a Snickers bar and he doesn't end up, you know?
You can really make a difference.
Make a difference. And that was the impact that I had. So I think that's a, that's a, like you said, I, I, that did come up when I was talking, um. When I was talking, I can't remember who it was with the police, police department. They mentioned that. I didn't know about that part of it because I wasn't around.
Commander Craig Dobson. It wasn't a sergeant. It's a commander, Commander Craig Dobson. And he will, if you, if you call Central Precinct, he will, um, make an effort. To come and meet with whomever you would like him to in your neighborhood. And he, he did, we, we just invited. Everybody who could come listen and it's, it's a little limited because he works during the day. And I know a lot of other, you know, everybody works during the day. So. If we make it around lunchtime or some kind of where people can say it's a break, like a coffee break or an errand break or something at 10 PM, 10 AM. He will name the place, like he'll be there for as long as you want him to.
I think that, that's the approach, right? Is just getting back to being accessible and, uh, changing, you gotta pivot the narrative and the belief, but to your point, exactly. I talk. Case, Kason's, uh, uh, Theodas Kason owns a fantastic, um, uh, butchery down in MLK. That's great. I've been buying meats from him forever.
Okay.
And actually he gives a shout out to Jesse Burke because Jesse is the one that helped him get his business going when he had some challenges and he's really grateful for that.
Great.
So he's a black gentleman in the community. He's a force in the community. And his frustration right there is that he's got open drug use out in front of him. He's got, you know, he's dealing with vagrants coming and it affects his ability to draw traffic and bring people into the stores. Now people will still go there because it's. Everybody wants to support Kason. He's a wonderful person. If you're ever there, go, go and buy your meats from Kason.
Going to start.
He's fantastic. Just tell him Bob sent you because he's a big supporter. You'll see my photo up in the, in the wall. I mean, he's a big fan, but his issue is the same as everybody's. Like he's frustrated. Because, you know, he's having to step over these people every day. They're walking in and out. And, uh, and so, yeah, to your point, it doesn't matter, uh, where you go in the community, that the folks that I talk to, everybody wants that feeling of safety. They want to feel. That they can roam and walk and tra- use public transportation in a way that it's designed to do. And, you know, and feel safe doing it. So, um, yeah. It, it's everyone wants, you know, wants to have, uh, that, uh, more policing and more safety. So. My deal is I know that they're down, you know, I think it's like, I, from, you know, they're down based on about 80 or so, based on the budget, the last one that I saw, I went, uh, but. They're down based on population by far more than that compared to other cities.
Oh, far more. I mean, we're in big trouble. Yeah.
Yeah. So we've this, you know, the, the, the default, the police messaging as a person of color and in being a marketer is the absolute worst marketing slogan I've ever heard. In my life, because you know, that wasn't the. You know, the, the whole idea of less policing to, to feel safer.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's not, you know, now you need effective policing. And I talked to, you know, uh, you, you need effective policing and part of that is they're going through a lot of training. But those folks wake up every morning and they don't know if they're coming home at night.
Oh, they go through an incredible amount of training. They have some of the best training in the United States. I don't think people understand that. And this idea that what happened in Minneapolis was what was going on here constantly is ridiculous. I mean, P P B. P P B is not, we're not New Mexico.
Right.
You know, Portland Police Bureau, they, they've got their stuff. They, they, yes, there are, of course there are bad police who work there. And I think. The good ones who are the majority want them out just as much as everybody else does. And, and that will, that will come out because everybody's eyes and ears are open and it's an alert community. But I think this idea that we needed to smash down on our police force, we have really paid for that dearly.
Yeah, we have. And now people are starving. It's kind of like measure one 10. It's like he hit something with a hammer, sledgehammer. And it's like, oh, okay. You know, so we got, you know? And I, and I think the narrative, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a moderate and it, you know, I'm a, I've always, you know, I've always voted Democrat. I'm a moderate Democrat, but I also, I also. I, I want to use our resources. I want to optimize our resources. So that doesn't make me, you know?
Crime is not progressive.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't understand why we have ceded crime to the right. We've ceded crime. We've ceded safety. We, in during COVID, we just kept it all closed. We ceded education. We, we let these, the, the right run with all of it. And now here we are, and it's like, we don't need to be wedded to this narrative. That we want to defund the police and we. Uh, we have to support a teacher's union at all costs and smash down the kids. I mean, there is a balance and Democrats can do it.
Right.
And look, is democracy in trouble or is it not?
Yeah.
It, it, because if it is, then we need to band together and like figure it out. Leaving people sleeping on the streets. And pretending that drug addiction doesn't exist. That's not progressive.
That's right.
I, I just, it's wild to me that we have ceded all of that to the right. Now it's all a right wing talking point. That is not true. And, and if we just leave that alone, Fox will run on it.
Yeah.
And there, that's who we've left it to. So we have a choice. We can step up and take those issues back. Or just, you know, let them run with it and allow ourselves to circle the toilet.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was, I also think of it like the whole public safety thing up here. Maybe that's just me, but I, I see it as like a, um. It's almost like anti-first responder in general. And, and I know like Nash nationwide and also locally, we struggle with recruiting for fire and police and even paramedics and, um.
Yes.
Like what you were saying, some of that made me think of, there's this, I don't know if it'll ever pass, but there's a bill. In Congress, uh, called the Helper Act that gives first responders a zero down, uh, program for homes, like if.
That would be great.
Great.
And it sounds like a great, yeah. And it's got bipartisan support and stuff. I don't know if it'll ever pass, but, um. But it just seems like, yeah. I don't know. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong about that, but it just seems like a, a, a wider first responder issue. And I don't know how we get younger people into those trades.
I don't either.
I think, I think part of it, like what you just, it's kind of like what we're talking about, like get creative with the resources.
Yeah.
And if we need more folks at a certain position in the city to solve a problem. You've got to adjust your market pricing. I worked for a company called PayScale for five years or four or five years. And that's what we did is we studied, you know? Prices for certain jobs in certain cities and certain areas.
Yeah.
And it would help companies figure out how to recruit.
I love, yeah, what you're saying about recruiting, because it's so, in, in the private world, it's such a just key component of survival and all that stuff. And, and yeah, it just seems to be absent from government here.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, yeah. So I, I, I think we just need to be, we need to be more agile. We need to be more creative.
Yeah.
We have the resources, you know?
Yeah. Okay. I got a couple more questions. I, I want to ask this grant one because like I was telling you.
Oh, yeah.
You went to grant, you have kids that go to grant.
Yeah.
What do you think about the pilot to ban cell phones in grant, which is kicking off this year, I think?
Yeah. Uh, both my kids are out of grant now, but I did ask them, of course they don't like it. Um, you know, I, I think sometimes it goes back to, we'll create a policy. That is trying to deal with an issue. That it may not fix the problem. If, if, if there's attention issues with students or whatever it is that's happening. So, you know, um. I, I understand that they're running a pilot. It seems a little extreme to me. Uh, you know, it's kind of like swinging a sledgehammer at, at a, you know, at an issue. So I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know how I feel about it. Honestly, um, I, it's frustrating that I understand how teachers are frustrated in dealing with classroom attention. But I also think it's kind of the new world where kids are using these phones for research and it's just, they think differently. And the technology that they use is different than we did when we sat in school with a number two pencil, you know? So I think that's part of the thing is that it is different, but I, I do know that like even watching my son, uh, and he's on his phone all the time. I'm on my phone. We all are now. But I, I would get frustrated sitting with him, having conversations because he's, you know, doing 10 things while we're trying to talk. Now maybe he can do that. And I can't.
I do think that's true. Yeah. The younger generations have more capability there. Like it's, I don't know. I'm one of those people, like if I'm writing a text or something, I have to sit there and like.
I do too.
I'm locked in. I can't, you know, but young people seem to be able to multitask.
I think, I think, you know, look, they're running a test. We'll see how it turns out. I don't know what the measurements of success would be. I don't know what they're trying to accomplish. The test scores go up, like what, what are they trying to solve for?
I think what they're concerned about is, um, the data, Jonathan Haidt has compiled this data. He's a Stern School of Business at NYU. And the data says these, that it's not necessarily the phone. It's really, it's social media. And it's like these group texts and that there's a dis- there's actually a disparate impact on girls, not necessarily boys, but it's girls. It's girls and it's, it's about, uh, you know, suicides or depression is like all these different public health, very severe concerns. And, and they're just, these children are online and there's not a lot. I, the data also says there's not a lot of face-to-face interaction. There's not a lot of telephone calls and that it's just people need each other. And it's not super healthy. And so I think the idea is more like what, what he suggests as a policy solution is that adults need to just get banned together and say, we're not doing this because otherwise the kids are running things and they've been running things for a while. And they're, they're not, they're not, even if they have the data, their brains are not fully, you know? And they're not able to digest this stuff. And so to the extent we want them to have it, I, you know, whatever they can have it, but like I have a 13 year old girl. And I will say like, she's been away at summer camp most of the summer and it's been, she's a different person. I mean, she can sleep now, you know, she's not wondering who's, um, being mean to her or where they, are, are they at Boba right now? And did they not invite me? And here's a picture of this and she bought this and I want to buy that. There's no buying.
They take their phones or something, I'm guessing.
Well, no, they're not allowed to take them.
Yeah.
So that, yeah. So there's no phones. There's no beauty products. There's no buying things. There's no anything.
Yeah.
Well, it's interesting that you brought that. I never thought about that distinction of like.
And she doesn't want her phone back.
Like this would never happen, but I almost wonder if a better solution is to be, hey, like people under 18 can no longer get on social media.
Well, yeah, but I, how do we regulate?
I know. That's why I say it would never work.
I mean, that's a role in my house and he suggests, I mean, Jonathan Haidt suggests that, especially if you have girls, like no social media because the da- the data is just so, it's so bad for them.
Cause I understand, I, I, I also heard from Terrence Hayes about some of the stuff you were saying and, and I never thought about it that way. Cause I, you know, I'm, I'm near 40, I'm all older on the spectrum, but like, but I see that kind of side of it too, for younger people where they do use it as a tool more maybe than adults. Um, but it is like, yeah, I just never thought about the, I wonder if there's a way to have it without social media.
Well, there, there is, and they have it in schools and their iPads and computers, you know? So it's not like they have no access to the internet. I mean, I think their teachers encourage them to do it. And in fact, all bizarrely to me, cause I'm just, I only edit on paper. And so if I have something that I, as a lawyer, if I'm going to file something with the court or if I'm going to read something and really edit it, I gotta print it out. And that's the only way I can do it. But these children do it all. I, I mean, they all do it. I'm sure you watch this. Certainly mine do. They do all their editing digitally and they submit every single item of work digitally. It's just like they press, yeah, they press a button and it disappears. Or if they were, if they're writing papers or taking, they're taking exams online.
I, I think you, you enlightened me with it, not just the data, but it is the social aspect. My daughter has been going to therapy a long time. A lot of it is behind.
Right.
The social media stuff. And I think that, yeah, you're right. I hadn't thought, I was thinking about the productivity aspect of it. But if it's probably 90% of what they're using it for is the social media stuff, right? And, and getting on, getting unplugged for that, you know, for a day or for four or five hours, that actually.
Yeah. Living your own life instead of watching.
And interacting with folks rather than texting someone to classrooms over about what you're going to do for Boba or whatever it is.
It's a lot of it's about spending money.
It's a really good, I think that's a really good point. I love it when my kids set their phones down. You know, we, we go to dinner or whatever. I'm like, hey, leave the phone at home. We're going for pizza.
Right. Cause you want to connect.
Yes. And you don't do it when you're doing this all day. So that's interesting. I hadn't thought about that, that perspective of it.
Even the paperless thing, I think is, I don't know, the more you're just in a digital world, it's just your kind of tunnel vision, but it, cause you mentioned pencil sharpeners earlier and I always think.
Number two pencil there.
Well, I always remember those, like, it was just like a little brain break. When you're a kid, you go up to that one like this.
The mechanical, yeah.
And you can kind of like show off to the girls or whatever. I don't know, but, um.
Check out my biceps while I rotate this thing.
Yeah, exactly. But now it's just like, there's none, it's all just digital. So I don't know, maybe that's contributing to the less face-to-face too.
I don't know about that. That part's interesting to me, but I just, even at the pediatrician, because I, this might sound like a lot, but I, I went to a high school with the highest pregnancy rate in the state. And so I think, I mean, I'm, you know, a child of the eighties and nineties, and I think a lot about teen pregnancy. And now that I have a teenager, I was talking to the pediatrician about it and he just said, you are thinking about the wrong thing. And I said, well, what, I, I mean, I mean, I should have been thinking more. I was, I should have been thinking more about this issue with the phone, but he said, uh, their teen pregnancy is down. Like that's not really what we're grappling with anymore. And he was like, look, if, if they, if these children are like meeting up face-to-face and, you know, ending up pregnant, there are some good things happening actually in the interim. Um, we don't want that outcome, but they're not meeting up face-to-face. They're sending photos and they're texting. And he's like, well, I would be concerned about his pills.
Yeah.
You know, that's what I would be really focused on, like taking substances.
Yeah. Especially.
Fentanyl is in everything.
You're taking drugs that they're discreet. So you can stick it in your pocket and pop it, you know, in the middle of the classroom.
Yeah, it's not all Adderall. It's not all Valium. It's not all oxycodone. In fact, most is not. And so just some kind of education around, hey, this, whatever it is that you're getting, you don't know where it's from. I mean, don't do it. And it just sounds extreme, like a Nancy Reagan thing, but that's where we're at. This isn't.
It's a different world.
It's not heroin anymore.
It's cheap. It's accessible. It's everywhere, you know?
And it's in everything. This fentanyl is, we're hearing about these teenagers, you know, at these high schools and junior high schools in Portland, getting a pill that they think is Adderall or Valium or something like that. And it's got fentanyl in it. Little kids, like to me, 15, that's little.
That is little. Well, because they, yeah, they don't really, they don't really know what they're taking. They're trusting someone and they're taking something and it's, it's scary, man. I mean, the drugs, the accessibility and the costs, the low cost and distribution. I mean, you know, these things being produced out of China and coming in through Mexico and all of that stuff. It's, it's, you know, it's frightening. That we're kind of, it feels to me like we're, you know, we're kind of in the target, you know, of, of some of these, these other places that aren't that supportive of us and don't really care about our youth and maybe are, you know, intentionally involved in those things. I don't want to go down the conspiracy, but it is frustrating because it's everywhere. And, you know, again, this is where our police force, like we're trying to fight things, you know, that hopefully we could play above that in society, but we have this free society and.
Well, we should have them. We should use, you know, we've got these resources with Portland Police Bureau. We should use them. We should be calling on them and saying, hey, can you, we should be begging these schools that are, seem to be the superintendent, et cetera. They seem to be so adverse to these officers coming in, but we should be begging them to do it. And we should be saying, please, bring in some of these officers, have them bring in a canine or something to soften it up if you need to. And, but they're, that's what they do. I mean, they're busting that P P B Central Bike Squad Instagram. They are busting people right and left and the pills are just non-stop. I mean, it's pounds and pounds and pounds of pills. Why can't they come in? And it doesn't need to be a scared straight thing, just facts. What's the information? Who's taking them? Why should we stay away from them? What are you seeing? I mean, I think that would, why aren't we doing that?
Yeah, yeah. The, the education, we did it. I mean, when we were growing up, it was more alcohol, you know, but now it's way more complex, you know? And, uh, I agree. I mean, I think education is a big part of it. It's got to start young. And, uh, we gotta, you know, we gotta do everything we can to get kids through. It's tough enough, like you said, with the social media to get them to navigate to adulthood. And now we've got all these other, to make all these other obstacles that we have that are, that they're having to deal with that we didn't have to. I, I know in my generation, I mean, it was mainly just booze and weed, you know, back then.
Right. It would have been hard. I mean, yes, alcohol is really deadly, but, um, you have to consume a fair amount of it in general. I mean, you know, less depending on your weight and everything, whatever. We can do all the throat clearing and the disclaimers. But fentanyl is real different. I mean, I think everybody would agree with that, but just a granule, you know, will kill you.
Yeah, it's wild. Um, I have one, one more question for you, serious, kind of serious question before I get into these goofy questions that I think you'd be perfect to ask this. You kind of touched on it earlier, but I've been asking candidates, um, cause I heard about, I don't know, I'm, I'm doing this rank choice panel coming up and I'm trying to think of all the problems with multi-member districts, um, that might come up.
Yeah.
And something that I think, like I said, you'd be perfect to answer this, cause I see this as possibly happening of like when voters have a problem in their district and they don't see it being solved, like say that, you know, next year from, uh, year from now. Do you see a lot of inter-district finger pointing of like, cause I'm just trying to figure out how we, how each, uh, city council person takes accountability in this, in these multi-member districts. Does that make sense?
I think I follow you. As far as a community outreach on certain, on certain issues that come up in the community or cross-community.
Like say, yeah, like public safety in your district, you know, a year from now, if, if people still aren't happy, who do they go to? Do they go to you or two of the other members and is there finger pointing there?
It's a really good question. I'm hoping that, yeah, I'm hoping that it's a collaboration, like, you know, my hope is that the three of us that come out of District Two are pretty well-aligned on a lot of these things. And, um, I, I was at, uh, you know, I was at an event in North Portland and their swimming pool is closed and they're upset, you know, because it's been, the pump broke.
Yeah, I heard about that. Yeah.
They've gone the whole summer without it.
I mean, that's a real problem.
Have them go to like one that's miles away.
Yeah.
Especially when we want these kids outside, you know, off the starting phone. Yeah.
Exactly. And you're trying to, what do you do? And a lot of those families are latchkey kids. And, you know, and so it was a great place for them to go.
Community place.
Community thing. So their feedback and their frustration was, is, you know, why are the resources going to these other parks and these other areas? And we, and we have a pool that's broken and we don't have park benches in our park. And, you know, so, uh, I think having access in the community and being in the community, and what I explained to them is, you know, this is, this is one of the positive benefits of having, you know, three folks and having that representation. So that, you know, when I read the job description for this role, a lot of it is community engagement and being out in the community, which is a part of it that I really like, you know, is, is, uh, and I'm passionate about is, you know, taking those, those issues back. You know, and making them, you know, and sitting down, whether it be with the mayor or whatever it is to try to get, you know, some prioritization around those issues. So I think, um, I think it's going to be a work in progress to try to navigate. And like I mentioned to you, even before we, I think maybe before we went live, is that the problems in a district don't stop at the boundaries of that district, right? And that's why we need a collective of 12 folks on the panel or on the council that we need seven at least that, uh, have, you know, some reasonableness to how we solve and approach these problems that are citywide problems. But, you know, obviously I'm going to be an advocate for, you know, some of the things that are happening in our area. But like I said, you know, homelessness is a citywide issue. Safety is a citywide issue. Uh, and so I think it's going to be a combination of those elements.
Yeah. No, I like that. Yeah. And, um, you totally strike me as the opposite of this, but what I'm trying to avoid is hopefully like, there's a situation where like with a pool where somebody goes to one of their counselors and they just keep everything to themselves and say, I'm going to try to handle this myself and.
Right. Look like the hero as opposed to. See the other two as competitors, you mean, maybe?
Yeah. How, I don't know.
Interesting.
But I didn't even think about that.
I always say, we're all going through this together, you know, like it's new for everybody. And, and like I said, I don't, you don't strike me as the type of person who'd do that, obviously.
It's interesting because my time with Tony Robbins, I mean, I like that, understanding people's, you know, uh, need for significance or importance or connection, all of those elements play into it and we're all human. So, you know, people are, uh, I, I, I look at it as, uh, I don't know, I always, because I've been a lot of my life in management.
Yeah.
I always wanted my folks to get the credit. Because if they got the credit, they were empowered to perform. And if they're empowered to perform, then I'm getting what I get out of the end of it. So I'm a real collaborator that way. And I, I like to solve problems by including a lot of folks. Because then you get better solutions when people are engaged. And, uh, that's just been one of my leadership management styles. People, you know, usually rally around that type of approach.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Shout out to Tony. Come on my show if you want to know.
You should.
He's amazing. He's just a lovely person.
Good, good advice too from him. Yeah. Um, okay. I'm going to get into these goofy questions here. Let's say you're parking somewhere. Do you normally pull in or do you back into a parking spot?
I like to pull in.
Okay.
Yeah. Even with the reverse camera, it depends on where I'm at, but I always pull it. Cause the thing is like, you go, I go to the gym, I pull in, I see people back in. I'm like, it's no different. You're having to back in. You gotta do it anyway.
I totally get it. Um, do you like crunchy or smooth peanut butter? Or maybe you don't like peanut butter?
I like crunchy, but I don't like, my wife gets the kind that you always gotta mix. She loves that.
She get the new seasons, Himalayan salt peanut butter?
I'm gonna have to ask her about that. No, she gets.
Is that you do have to mix?
Yeah. She's got to mix it. And I, I don't like mixing it.
I don't either.
I hate that.
It's a mess.
It's a mess. Your knuckles and then the oils.
The oil's everywhere.
It's a slippery slope, no pun intended. But, but no, I've heard, I've heard people like, they'll put it upside down in the fridge and all this stuff. And I'm just like, that's too much work.
It is too much work.
If you were on a deserted island and let's say there was like a buffet of food, for whatever reason, was there one condiment that's just like your go-to? Ketchup?
For everything.
And is it the regular, is it the Portland ketchup? Is it?
I love the Portland ketchup, but I, I, I'm a Heinz. I like Heinz, you know? I mean, a little better value.
I'm like the total opposite. I love mustard and.
I like mustard.
Ketchup's the one I would just leave.
Would you really?
But that's okay. We can.
But you can't do mustard on french fries, bro. Yeah.
Even for fries, I, this is a, this is a hot take, but I'd go, I'd go nothing over ketchup.
That is a hot take.
But I like, uh, just ranch or honey mustard or something like that.
But we had great rapport going and now you're a mustard guy and I'm a ketchup guy. Is that what you're telling me now?
That's, it's a deal breaker. No, I just didn't. Let's see, it's along those lines. Yeah. Do you have a favorite type of french fry? Do you like regular cut, crinkle cut, curly fries, waffle fries?
What are the steak fries?
I just, yeah.
Like Jojos or steak?
No, the big, those big ones are hot.
Right.
I saw a photo this morning of a friend of mine who was at like a steakhouse and I was looking at the plate and I was like, those look like steak fries.
Yeah. Those are delicious.
I'm not a big, I mean, I try to watch my carbs, but I got a buddy, every time we go out, he, you know, we, we got our group on a Sunday. I'm like, okay, who's getting fries? Cause I, I gotta have three of them, you know? So, no, but I love the, the big.
I like it. I like it.
And salty with ketchup.
Let's say you're getting ice cream somewhere. Do you know, go waffle cone, regular cone cup? Or maybe I've also heard people who just buy a pint, take that.
Well, I used to do the cone thing, but again, I'm like, you know, I'm, I eat carbs. If I'm eating the ice cream, I'll, I'll eat it.
You're so disciplined.
Well, I, you know, I'll eat it in a cup.
I like the cup too.
I like the cup.
Yeah.
But I used to eat the waffle cone with like 16, you know? Scoops on top of it, but.
It's like toppling.
Yeah. Now I gotta watch, watch myself a little, little differently.
And what, do you have a go-to flavor of ice cream you're putting on it?
I like, I like chocolate.
Okay.
Yeah. Chocolate, chocolate, chocolate. Like, you know, especially if you get the chunks in it.
Sure. The brownie or something and the chips and.
I think my last guest was saying that too. They're like, yeah, the little brownie chunks in there, whatever it is. Uh, let's see here. Um, which piece of fruit do you think you could throw the farthest? If you just checked? Cause you, you're a baseball guy.
I was a pitcher, man. Yeah. So I could throw, I could throw an apple.
You're the perfect person to ask. Yeah. Cause what is, the apple's the closest to a baseball.
Yeah. I can throw an apple. I think it would fly farther than like a tangerine or something. I don't know. One of those, something round that I can get in my hand and throw a slider, something, put a little spin on it.
Yeah. Okay. If there were, this, I mean, you've kind of done this, is if you were forced to or could pick a gigantic brand or company to run, is there one you'd want to run?
Man, that's a, the reason I hesitate is because I would be thinking of the culture of the company more than just the product or the brand.
Yeah.
Cause I've worked for some companies that are, don't have the big shiny brand and I had more fun doing that. You know, like I worked in the insurance industry for a while and it was probably the best time I ever had.
Because of the culture.
Because of the culture and the people. And we were selling kind of a nuanced product. It was like professional liability. Because of the culture and the people. And we were selling kind of a nuanced product. It was like professional liability, you know? So it was a high-end kind of client, but the culture is, would drive that decision, um, for me. So I don't know. I mean, I've worked for Coke. I've worked at Microsoft. They were good and bad things. When I, I left them because at some point you're just kind of like, yeah, the culture, you know? Yeah. It was a big part of it for me is like, all right, I've, even when I, you know, when I worked for Tony, like I said, for the couple of years I was there on his leadership team. And by the time I got to two years, I was like, okay, I got everything out of this experience.
Right, right.
And it was time for me to move on and, you know, and try something different, you know? And it was great. And he didn't want me to go. We had a great time together. But, um, it was just, I, I, when I chose to go to work for Tony, I had the approach that, okay, well, he's the Michael Jordan of sales. And I want to go be Scottie Pippen and I want to go learn. And I kind of got to that point after, and it's a very immersive, you know, 24/7 culture. And I liked, I wanted to be coaching my kids and I didn't want to be traveling is like, you know, it sounds sexy to like go to Fiji. My wife's not with me and I'm going to Fiji.
I can imagine it'd be a pretty brutal traveling.
It was brutal. And it was more so, more than I, like, some people love it, but I'm a, you know, I love. You know, I've coached 20 years of youth athletics and that's where I got most of my joy from is being involved in, you know, helping kids and being a mentor. And so that's where I get, you know, that's why I did the Coach Bob thing on the card. So it's like, in a dugout, yeah.
You kind of already did this, but I always ask people, did you, is there a local business or a restaurant you want to shout out? Like you had a good meal at recently?
Boy.
You mentioned the, uh, the meat place, which.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Cason. Yeah, I definitely love Cason.
How do you spell it? So people know.
C A S O N.
Okay.
Cason. And his first name is Theodas. He's the sweetest gentleman and he's got great products that, that are there. Um, the, the one that breaks my heart is American Dream Pizza is closing.
Is it? Are you kidding?
They're selling it and they said if they don't sell it, they're going to close.
You're talking about the one by the hospital?
Yeah.
I used to go there all the time.
Dude, American Dream. I took my, we had some friends from out of town and they, they've got it up for sale. So that one kind of, that one.
I love their Maryland Monroe pizza.
Yeah.
What is it? What's on that?
Cause I'm, I'm, this is another hot take, maybe. I'm one of those people that likes fresh tomatoes on the pizza. And they had that, had that and like, I think like bacon or something. I don't know. It was a good, it was a good, but yeah, that's sad to hear.
Yeah, I know. It was a bummer. Hopefully somebody will, will buy it and keep the tradition going.
Yeah. Um, okay. Um, I'll do my little spiel here. I, I'm going to send you a donation because anyone comes on, I, I just appreciate your time. And I know people need donations with the small donor thing.
Thank you.
Um, and if people like what you're saying, where can they go to donate?
Uh, yeah, appreciate it. Yeah. Small donor thing, you know, trying to keep big money out of politics. So vote bobpdx.com. Vote bobpdx.com to donate. Appreciate the support.
Yeah. And it's, uh, you probably know better than me, but five is.
Between, it should be between five and $20.
Yeah. Yeah. $20 is the max that would go towards a small donor, but you can donate.
Yeah. You can donate the 350 and they'll still match it to the, to the max. Not, yeah. So it stops at 20.
Yeah. So it's really anything above five will.
Yes. Yes. It's helpful. Five turns into 50, 20 turns into 200. So, yeah. So.
I mean, not that I want people to give you the minimum, but I just think it's important that people know it's as low as $5. It, and it turns into so much money. We, we're paying it anyway. Like just take advantage of it. If, if there are people that you like out there, you can sprinkle that around relatively.
And that's why I, I love donating because I, anybody, if you live in Portland, can donate to any district. You don't have to live in District Two or whatever.
And I think you should donate out of district so that you can get whoever's in, whomever is in your district to work effectively with, we're all going to have to work together.
That's right.
So it's going to matter to you for the city if you can pick people out, even outside of your district and help promote them. And I think donate to them.
That, that's a great shout out. I, I tell folks that live out of my district, I say, you can't vote for me on the ballot, but you can vote with your money.
Totally.
If you like what I say and you want a council that is operational.
Exactly right.
That's a, you know, you gotta.
Will affect.
And it will affect.
It will affect all of us.
Exactly. So I appreciate both of you guys making those comments and that support. I appreciate that.
Yeah. If you can't vote for him, vote with, with your wallet outside the district like I am, because I think you're a great candidate.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anything else you want to say before?
I just, I'm really grateful for the opportunity, you know? Like I said, at the top of the, at the top of the meeting, I've never pursued politics before. And I think that we have an opportunity with this new form of government. I'm really optimistic about it. Uh, you know, we get the right leader. We get seven of 12, hopefully more than that, but I think we can start to affect change in the city. And, uh, when I decided to run, that was one of my criteria, like, okay, can I actually help move things forward? And I'm optimistic and I believe I can. So I appreciate the time. Great meeting you guys.
Good meeting you. Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming in, Bob.
Awesome.